Is Jason not coming? He is not, okay. I didn't know if we needed to delay anything. Okay. We will call the Planning Commission meeting of May 16th, 2024 to order. Shaun, would you like to do the roll call?
Here.
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 Thank you.
Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be made? If not, do I have a motion to accept? Second, Dale made the motion, Marcia seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm going to turn over the case for review to Tom.
There are two cases tonight. We'll kind of handle them consecutively. Case B 2275 and 2276, they are both regarding a property that you all know as Hartley Truck Parts Facility. Part of it is to rezone from general business to highway business to fit in better with our zoning for that area. And then the other 2276 is a commission approved use. We have Gwen Keane here, and I think she can probably give you a little bit of oversight of the project and what they have in mind down there. And we'll talk about the rezoning. It's kind of just technical in nature, and we can do it all.
So your mic is muted with the red. If you hit the button, it'll turn green.
I did. Thank you so much, though. I do have some handouts, just so you can kind of get an idea if I'm able to approach or...
Thank you, America.
So my name is Gwen Keane. I'm with QuickTrip Corporation. I've been with the company for 22 years now, and I typically operate out of St. Louis, but I've been spending a lot of time in Indiana and definitely enjoyed it. We've started our first construction start in Indiana in Delville, and we've got some others in the hopper, and we're very excited about this location. I believe this is a great spot for what we call a travel center. So we understand zoning codes don't adhere to the way we like to classify things, but we definitely differentiate ourselves, which is why we call it a travel center, because we don't offer a lot of the amenities that a typical truck stop would offer. We don't have lounges, we don't have showers, we don't have any type of indoor seating, we don't have a restaurant, we have none of that in our nature. We're looking for those folks that are wanting to go from Indianapolis to Kansas City and be back at home. Short hauling, we know, is on the rise, and those are the folks that don't need all of that. They just want to go in, get a slice of pizza, get a drink, and then get on their way, maybe do a little bit of paperwork or something like that. So as you can see from our site plan, we have very limited amenities in that regard, especially when it comes to any type of parking. So normally, if you see at another truck stop, there's at least a couple acres of parking, and we do not provide that, because that's not what our goal and our target audience or customer is. So we have looked at this spot. We think it's a great spot. I'm sure you all are aware that highway... I'm going to get it mixed up. It's Highway 13, isn't it?
Three.
Three. I'm working on another one off of Highway 13. Highway three is an NDOT-controlled jurisdictional highway. We do have a traffic study that has been completed. Our traffic study does indicate that we will have to put in some dedicated left-turn lanes, and we'll have to do some signal timing modification. The good news is, by us doing that, the level of service that's already... that's currently there is actually going to improve a little bit. So that's some good news. We don't typically always get to say that. We usually just get to maintain the status quo, but in this case, with what we're proposing to put in for our spot, it should actually improve it a little bit. Now, the challenge, of course, is NDOT, and we've been working with them, and we are hopeful that we're going to get a meeting with them here in the next few weeks in order to discuss that access. Our research currently shows that there is a break-in access that is currently allowed. We just have to have that conversation with NDOT. So our current site plan does show that access spot. We're going to work through all of that and make sure that whatever access we do get, obviously, we're able to permit with NDOT and work through that. So that's why our site plan does show those access spots off of Highway three. And then, obviously, we have the access off of Road 125. What we like to do is we like to separate the traffic as much as possible. So we want the trucks utilizing Highway three, whereas we want the smaller vehicles using 125, so we can separate that traffic as much as possible for better circulation on the lot and just better overall safety of keeping those type of vehicles separated. So I know I've rattled off a few things. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I appreciate your staff's assistance. We thought we were good with the zoning, but after further talk, it made sense to just go on and make sure that the zoning was appropriate and making sure that it doesn't confuse. And then we've got the CAU, and we respectfully ask for your approval on those matters. And I'm happy to answer any questions I can. Do you need my address? Did I say my address? I don't think I did. Do I need a...
No.
Okay, if you've got my information, all right.
Are there any questions from the board members?
The only comment I was going to make is, taking a lot of, like, school trips, band and choir to, like, Disney World, we always stopped at a QT, a QuickTrip, I think, in northern Georgia, and it was very nice. There weren't a lot of semis, but it was a great stop for restroom break and the kind of things. Good pick-me-up, good rest stop with snacks, good service. Anyway, it's a popular place that I'm familiar with.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Georgia is one of our largest markets. That's only second to the Dallas-Fort Worth area. We're growing exponentially. Why are we in Indiana? Because, like I said, that short hauling is on the rise. So we used to go in where we'd go right into Atlanta, and then we would just saturate the area. But we're finding we have a multimillion-dollar... Actually, I think it's almost a billion at this point, security systems that actually will monitor the entire site. Well, once we were able to develop that type of level of security, we can now monitor our stores from more of a distance. See, none of the QuickTrips are franchised. We're all privately held, and everything is controlled out of the corporate office in Tulsa, Oklahoma. So we don't just, you know, come and put one in spot and say, hey, hope everything goes well, we'll see you later. No, we are completely involved at every level of the operation of the store. We will bring in an experienced managerial team. There will be local hiring for some of the managerial positions and all of the clerks, but we believe it's important to have our culture developed in these, so we can maintain that brand of excellence that you saw in Atlanta, that if you're going into this store that's in Newcastle, you have that same expectation of good products, good quality, a staff that knows what they're doing in maintaining a high-level, high-standard store.
Anybody else? Is there any from the public who wants to speak for? Tom, can we get him? I mean, I don't know if we can get it to you tonight, but can we get it to you?
I can get your information and...
Okay, okay. I'm going to hang on a second. So in the rezon hearing, we don't direct questions to them. You can direct them to us, and then we can get answers for you, but yeah. But you are welcome to come to the mic and direct your questions. Absolutely. We try to keep this...
I got you. I guess my concern is, you say you're putting a new traffic light in on State Road three, so you're going to do a curb cut in there on State Road three to access?
No, I think she said they did a traffic study that they would have to do lane... additional turn lanes. I don't believe there's additional stoplight.
How the trucks... There's only going to be one entrance into this truck stop, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Off of State Road three.
Off of State Road three, which will be off of 125.
The honest answer is, we don't know yet. We are proposing two access drives, one a full access and one a right-in, right-out. The full access, we will put in a dedicated left-turn lane, so basically, we're moving folks out of the way to one turn at each trip, so the rest of the traffic can flow. The signal that's existing, we're proposing signal timing. We're not looking to put in a new signal at the location.
Okay, okay. That's... Yeah, yeah. And then I've got a series of other questions that I've went ahead and asked her.
Oh, okay.
There's some dropped, you know. In that area, there's a lot of drainage issues, you know, at 500 South and State Road three. My concern is, what's going to happen with the runoff water? Are you proposing any kind of retention ponds?
So...
Or...
Tom, I'm going to let... Go ahead and hit your mic. I'm going to let you address this.
Yeah, that's a site development issue and comes in the site development plan and the overall plan. They would not be allowed to put any water onto your property or onto any adjacent property.
And I'll tell you, NDOT doesn't like anybody putting any water on their property either.
NDOT doesn't want any more water in their ditches, if we can tell you that, and it's a constant battle.
They recently redone all that, as we all know, a couple of years back or a year back or whatever, and unfortunately, they didn't improve it, you know? It's still the problem. So my concern is with this development going in, is that going to add to our existing drainage issues? Then it brings into the next question, is there city utilities? Are they asking to have city utilities ran down, you know, to the property? I mean, I guess I've got a lot of questions in regards to that and don't know if this is the appropriate meeting to have these questions. I really don't know if that makes sense, but...
Any utilities or infrastructure that they develop is up to them. How they do it, there's different ways that they could get things to their property, but there are services that go there in that area, so they can get services.
Got you. If... I guess if it's okay, I would love to maybe have the opportunity to discuss this, because we don't know... We live right down the street. We don't know if we're for it or against it. How is that right there? Folks, thanks so much for your time. Thank you.
Darren Jacobs, Spiceland Town Council President. I've got a couple of things, and I want to kind of separate these two. So I want to speak on as town council president first. And the first thing I'd like to say is, this is the first that we heard of this hearing was today. We were aware of this, and I was at a meeting with the lady here a couple of months back, but we were not aware that this hearing was even happening tonight. We did not receive any type of notification. Understand, we're not a landowner within the 660 feet, but this is 700 feet from the Spiceland Town limits. It's 500 feet from our booster station, which is where we get all our water, and we were given no notification of this prior. We also, to your question, we're going to be the water supplier for them, so probably would have been a good idea to invite us to this meeting as well. So there was no notification. I can't speak for what the council thinks of this, because we haven't had an opportunity to even discuss it. The... And I just also want to point out that when I found out about this, looked on the website, there's no agenda on the website. Understand that they're following the letter of the law by posting it on the door, but had no way to know even what order or anything else. So this was not on the agenda for any member of the public to see, and also, none of the case files are on the website. Now, as a resident of Henry County and as a resident of Spiceland, I want to speak on the rest of this. We have... Currently have three gas stations south of 70, directly south of 70. We have two more within two miles. So within two miles, we have five gas stations. We're proposing a sixth gas station. Many of you remember that there were two gas stations that formerly sat in this area that had been gone for a long time. I'm sure they run a good business. I'm not opposed to their business, but I want to read something from the comprehensive plan. "All three of the interchanges were addressed and thought about in the comprehensive plan." Spiceland, the Spiceland-Newcastle Plan says, or in the Henry County comprehensive plan, it says about the Spiceland-Newcastle interchange, "Future development in and around the Newcastle-Spiceland exit should help to make its area a shopping and employment destination for the entire Henry County community. Appropriate uses for this area include regional commercial uses and low-to-moderate intensity industrial uses." Now, again, I don't have anything against their business. I'm sure they run a good business, but I don't think that that fits what we have discussed for the comprehensive plan for Spiceland. Not just Spiceland, but it's been said many times, this is also the gateway to Newcastle. So adding another gas station in here to what... Now, I'm like everyone else, I'd love to see the former Hartleys cleaned up, torn down, it's an eyesore, but I don't know that this is the best use of the ground. And then one other final point to what you were saying. The site plan that I saw and what it sounds like she's proposing is a curb cut, as you said, off of State Road three. Again, the comprehensive plan says, "We should limit the number of curb cuts or access points along the county's remaining thoroughfares. We should instead plan for the use of frontage roads along county minor artery and major collector roads to allow for relatively uninterrupted travel on the county's minor artillery and major artillery roads while still allowing access to, and thus, the future development and redevelopment of adjacent properties while maintaining the visibility of the adjacent properties." When we had the meeting several months back, I pointed out, and they have... They're proposing or have already bought the property that goes all the way up to 500 West or West 500 South, sorry, which already has a left-turn lane and is far away from the current stoplight. If they would, instead of trying to make another curb cut off of State Road three and go up that hill into that area, which is going to cause additional traffic, I understand may work with NDOT, and NDOT may allow it, but I would propose that if this commission does allow this to move forward, that you require them to put in a frontage road so that their trucks, instead of turning off of State Road three there, will go up to 500 South, turn off, and then they can use a frontage road to access their building. That also makes the rest of the property usable for additional development in the future. That's my recommendation. That's my opinion as a Spiceland citizen and resident. Thank you.
Sorry, my mic died. You may come back up and address anything.
All right. I appreciate him referencing the comprehensive plan and pointing out that the comprehensive plan does indicate for regional commerce, and that's what we're trying to establish here, is something that is regional. I want to point out that QuickTrip is one of the best in the business. You have an article that was provided to you this evening that indicates that we're one of the top 100 brands that customers love, which is kind of odd when you think about it, for a gasoline service station to acquire such a level. The other thing is, and I think we're all well aware, that property has been underutilized for some time, and sometime to kick off that retail and what you want, you got to have something new and bright and shiny that says, hey, this is a good spot to be in. And we have vetted out this, and we do believe this is a good spot. We not only are we buying... The site plan that we've provided only shows a part of that. We're buying that entire triangle. So I understand the concerns about drainage as well, but the good news is, we're not developing that entire triangle at this point, and we do have plenty of room for detention, for ponds, for underground, for above-ground, that we've got that room and ability to do so. And to his point, we do go through permitting. We have to, you know, comply with the rules and regulations that you all have established here, but also, it'd be pretty silly of us to spend multi-millions of dollars to open a new establishment just to have drainage all over the lot. We want a place that when someone comes, we only get really that first impression opportunity. And if I guarantee you, on his van trips, if he went into a QuickTrip and was like, well, this place, there's water everywhere and stuff like that, probably wouldn't have pulled off again. And we take that very seriously. That's why, again, we're privately held, we care a great deal about our branding, and we're going to bring in an experienced managerial team. So in my opinion, this does meet your criteria in the comprehensive plan. We hear the concerns about the drainage. We're aware of it, which is why we do have a civil engineer that is local to Indianapolis working on this and is aware of all of that. I do believe we discussed some of that in our pre-application meeting, so to speak. So I'm very confident that this will be a great spot. There is a bracket of access already established with NDOT, and again, to that point, I wish we had it a little bit more, but I understand you all have had some fun dealing with NDOT at times, and they're not exactly quick on getting back to you when you're trying to establish things. So one other thing that I did want to, again, point out and remind, that we do have that traffic study. We are proposing a sizable amount of dedicated turn lane in order that we can make sure that we get that traffic off. And actually, once the signal timing's done and that dedicated left-turn lane in, it will improve the level of service. Right now, your level of service is a level of D. Our signal timing changes and putting in those dedicated left-turn lanes will take it up to a C. So there is some improvement with what we're going to do, not just to mitigate our impact, but make sure that there's no impeding or lower service to the current folks that are using that highway. So hopefully, I addressed something. If you have any other questions or if I failed to address something, let me know.
I have a question. Have you evaluated the situation down there based on the amount of filling stations there is down there? Is this an item that's going to go in and temporarily go out of business?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm talking about another filling station.
Oh, as far as the...
Do you think that that area can adapt to another station with what's already down there?
Absolutely. And here's the thing, we do a great deal of analysis. For us, it's not just spending quite a bit just on the property itself, but again, we're investing multi-million dollars into establishing a business that we expect to operate for 20, 30, 40 years. And if you look at the history of QuickTrip, there's very few of our stores that just are in and out. I think... I know we have some locations that have been with us through the beginning of time when, you know, we've been in business for 70 years now. So we're looking for a long-term commitment. We know that competition breeds better product, and so you're going to have... If we're working with others, and that you're going to have a better product, not only from us, from those folks as well. But the other aspect is, some folks aren't going to live up to that standard, but when you have something new and you have something where people are desiring to go, then we believe that will breed further retail, not just for a service station. The other thing I want to point out is, more than... A lot of times when people think of a QuickTrip or all of the other folks, you're thinking, oh, that's a gas station. But our catchphrase is that we're more than a gas station, and honestly, we're not in the gas business, we're in the convenience business. And this generation that we have, they love convenience and want conveniences, which is why you see more of these folks like us coming, because this is where this generation and future generations are going, to that convenience element. And so convenience is not going to go away, and convenience is only going to get more and more competitive. So I do feel that, yes, we will be able to sustain and be here for a long time, because we're making that investment. We've done all of our analysis. If that wasn't the case, I wouldn't be standing in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I was just going to say that I think this would be a great improvement to what's in that area currently and probably an improvement to what's across the road as far as the construction site for a company that will remain unnamed, but we do have on the docket a major housing and many consumer in the ready 2.0 between Flying J and Pierce Parkway, which has a decent shot at getting funded, which would fill exactly what Darren was talking about in the comprehensive plan. So there's plenty of room down there, I think, for everything. I can't imagine you wanting to spend millions and not having done your marketing study and your analysis, but...
And again, the Flying J is a different type of business model, you know? Those are the folks that are part of their rewards program, that are directed to go there because of their fleet accounts and the fact that that's where they have to go. We actually serve more independent contractors and folks that, again, don't want to get messed up in the muck of having to go through two or three acres and, you know, stacked up diesel bays. These are the folks that want to come in, they want to get their fuel, they want to get their weight, because they can just do it all at one spot and then get on their way. We're not any type of what I would call a long-term facility at all. We always say it's in the name, and that's QuickTrip. We really want you to come in, get your stuff, and be on your way, which is why we don't have any indoor seating. We do have a couple patio tables out the front, because nothing says, hey, we're serving food like having those patio tables. And you do have some folks that just want to take that break, especially on a nice day. But as far as any of those amenities, we really are a different type of business model and are looking for a different type of client that would go to those larger ones.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Do you have another question? Go ahead and hit your mic. Oh, you have a question. Excuse me. Come on up, sir.
I have a question here. I like your comments a lot right there. I do kind of want to pick up where he left off. The notifications, some of my neighbors did not get served. I understand sort of like what he's saying. It just didn't seem like there was many people served, and I would really like to know how many actually people got served. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I bet there wasn't a handful. Number two, he had made mention possibly of...
Hang on one second. Tom can answer that question, how many people got noticed.
Eleven people, yeah.
That met the criteria.
Yeah. He had made mention maybe bringing traffic in off of 500 South. That would be something that I spoke to some of my neighbors about, and that we would be totally against that, bringing that traffic, any of that truck traffic, any of that car traffic.
I'd like your comments a lot right there. I do kinda want to pick up where he left off. The notifications, some of my neighbors did not get served. I understand sort of like what he's saying. It just didn't seem like there was many people served, and I would really like to know how many actually people got served. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I bet there wasn't a handful. Number two, he had made mention possibly of...
Hang on one second, Tom can answer that question, how many people got noticed. That met the criteria.
Yeah. He had made mention maybe bringing traffic in off of 500 South, that would be something that I spoke to some of my neighbors about, and that we would be totally against that, bringing that traffic, any of that truck traffic, any of that car traffic down to our county roads, would not be acceptable to us, right there. We've also made comment that it would really be maybe kinda nice to burn that backside of 500 South off, where you wouldn't even really kinda see that. And then, Bobby, you and I had spoke prior to the meeting of possibly closing off 125, County Road 125, at 500 South, so people don't get turned around and get on our county roads and bust our county roads up. My name is Mike Creach, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Rezone.
CAU. Yes, they'll have to bring final site plan, just like anybody else, yes. Hey, Tom, hit your mic.
Well, they, they're gonna go through a plat on the, on the property, so that'll come back.
That'll come back here. And please remind me, because my brain has just gone, this is just a motion and a vote, there's no, for the rezone.
Correct.
Correct, sorry. I just, my brain is, yeah.
And now, the commission approval for the use doesn't mean that they'll be able to even get everything done to even build. They could come to us with a plan, and we'd say, well, that's not gonna work. We don't have that yet, that's part of the building.
Correct, it's very similar to the subdivision out on 200 North. They got the rezone, but they still have to come back and, with all their site plans, and it may not be a feasible thing for them to do once they start doing the engineering. Correct. Okay.
And the, and the, the rezone has to go to the commissioners for approval. So you can approve the, you can move to approve the CAU for that use upon the approval of the rezone, but they still have to come back with a plat.
So is this a, this is a request to rezone from general business to highway business two, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And nothing else can happen until we act on that? Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approved the first step in this hurdle of rezoning the current general business zoning to highway business two.
We have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion by Kenan Gray, second by Marsha Grattner, all those in favor, so do you want to do a roll call?
I'll do a roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Kenan Gray.
Yes.
Yeah, Paul?
Yes.
Bobby Palmer?
Yes.
Martha Grattner?
Yes.
David Fisher?
Yeah.
Lori Pritchett?
Yes.
Jake Martin?
Yes.
Terry Matten?
Yes.
Indiana three zones from the general business to highway business two.
Okay, so the next, we have Case B2276, which is the same. Applicant is requesting commission approved use to operate a truck and auto refueling facility. The applicant is QuickTrip. The property size is 23.8 acres, located at 5080 South, County Road 125 West in Newcastle. So, again, I will have you, sorry, I'm shaking my head to somebody in the back who's shutting my office door, so, yes, if you want to come, come up and...
Going to QuickTrip. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. So do we have any questions from anybody on the commission?
Question.
All right.
You know, it sounds like there's a lot of questions out here. Is it possible that we could put this on HI and have a public hearing where more people could come in and make comment?
Well, this is the public hearing. This is the public hearing. Everybody was notified that was legally notified, I can't help that they don't show up.
When were the notifications sent out, Tom? We've had a major delays at the postal service. I'm getting Easter cards two weeks after Easter, et cetera.
So according to the guidelines we received, we actually mailed these out on May the 2nd. We had a certificate of mailing form to show proof of when they were mailed. And then I also have the affidavit of publication, where it was publicized in the local newspaper, and that took place on May the 2nd as well.
Two weeks ago.
Does anybody else have any questions? And then I'll start the...
Bobby, I got one. It isn't in the documentation that I seen real quick, but there was a gas station there at one time, right? A Shell, that's what I thought.
At the Hartley?
No.
It's further, further south, there was a Shell station.
It was right across from the Speedway station.
Up, up on that hill, so Hartley's, yeah, up on that little hill.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I guess I thought, from my memory, there was one literally right there at that intersection, you know, where we're talking about.
This is the old Hartley, the old Hartley truck park, thank you.
There's a Denny's.
But you are correct, sir, you are correct. That corner was...
Where's, where the sheds are located.
That, that corner, at 125 and 3.
Where Hartley, where the mess is right now, where the Hartley truck parks, it was just, that's south, where the sheds are.
Right, right.
It's right there.
And I, the reason I asked that, so what was it zoned at, in that area, that, has it always been general business? Was it highway business?
That's been gone for, yeah, that's, gosh, those gas stations...
It couldn't have been highway and the general, and bounced around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, but that gas station was there and gone. We won't talk about that, because I think that's where I started getting my gas when I was 16.
And that was the point of the question, just, you know, zoning history of it, if it had been highway business once before.
Yeah.
You know, kind of a precedent there.
Yes, go.
I just feel very uncomfortable with the in and out situation that you're talking about, as far as the exit is concerned. You know, right now, you say you're going to 125, I believe it is, until you get another exit or something else, I just, I just don't think it's a good idea for right now, myself.
She's got, not she, the company's gonna have to go through a lot of hoops with NDOT, and they are very picky and meticulous. We've had to go through so many hoops with NDOT, and the county has to go through and follow a ton of regulations. They're not going to approve anything that's detrimental to the flow of traffic off of I-70, or onto 3, or off of 3, I don't think. I'd be surprised. They have a history of being very strict about these things.
Yes, please.
To that point, here's what we know today. We know that we've completed a traffic study. This traffic study was done by a traffic engineer that has worked with QuickTrip for almost 30 years now. The reason why we use, we can and CBB is because they know us, and they know how we operate. Again, it would be foolish to invest millions of dollars into a spot that won't work, or you get a truck in there that's just completely congested. So not only do they know how we operate, but they go back and reevaluate and make sure that what they predicted was gonna happen, based on engineering, it wasn't just a crystal ball, but based on all the earrings and engineering and the calculations, that it actually did, as they said. They have a very, 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 very high success rate, which is why we use them. So we know we've got a traffic sport, study that we know will work. The other thing that we know is that NDOT, when they purchased up the LARW, that limited access right-of-way, there was a brake left along Highway 3. So we anticipate that, yes, we will get an access off of Highway 3. What that does is it keeps that truck traffic separated from the smaller vehicular traffic that will be using 125 to get in and out of the QuickTrip. So we keep that separated. Now, where that braking access ends up, and whether or not Grant, NDOT grants a second access along Highway 3, that our site plan shows, there is where the unknown factor is. And we've been into NDOT for some time, hoping that by the time we got to this meeting, we would have that answer of whether or not we were gonna get two. But the paperwork from NDOT proving that they had that limited access right-of-way has been very slow. And we finally have the deeds, and even the deed that they provided us did not, did not match what they claimed they had. So, again, this is a very, thank you, this is a very arduous process with them. So we do believe that that is the best way to go. To this gentleman's point, it's not convenient if a truck has to go clear up to 500 and then backtrack to get to us. So we're looking at clear, precise, safe access, and with those dedicated left turn lanes, that's actually gonna help out Highway 3, because anybody making those turns is gonna be sitting in a dedicated lane and not holding up the rest of the traffic that's going down Highway 3. So I appreciate that it seems like we've got a lot of unanswered questions. We, we're not in permitting, and a lot of times the drainage, all of that type of stuff, all that gets worked out in permitting. I can't give you precise calculations on drainage, I just know that I have a civil engineer that's already run those numbers, and I would fire him if he then comes back later and says, yeah, we can't get this drainage figured out. So we haven't figured it out on a conceptual basis, as to the utilities. We haven't notified utilities, we haven't linked, but part of our analysis is making sure that we know that there are points that utilities are provided that we can connect to. So I definitely appreciate that it kinda seems, especially with these folks, and I'm more than happy to stick around and we can talk through it and, and kind of, you know, keep this conversation going of what's happening and when it's gonna happen and all this. But as far as where we're at in our process, we need to know, before we actually purchase this property, that I can put shovels in the ground at that spot and build a QuickTrip. Whether it's two spots off of Highway 3, or no spots off of Highway 3, I have to know that your county has given me the ability, that I can work through those issues, in order to make sure that I can put a shovel in the ground. So that's why I do respect, I understand the idea or the thought, maybe we need to table this a little bit, but we did adhere to your rules, and we would ask that this could move forward this evening, in order that we can continue our process and determine whether or not we're able to actually purchase the property, so we can keep moving forward.
Before I move on to asking anybody in the audience...
Are you aware of what we're talking about when we talk about comprehensive plan? There's a lot of work put into that some time ago, and a lot of studying, you know, not to say that there can't be some change, you know, but I didn't know if you was aware what we, that or not.
Anybody else? Before I open it up to the public?
I was just gonna say, this is a CAU that even if we approve it, it has to go by the commissioners, correct?
CAU does not, the rezone does.
Oh, well, I get that turned around.
Yeah, the rezone does, the CAU does not.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public, who, anybody wants to speak for? Anybody wants to speak against? I guess I didn't ask you if you had received any letters either, I'm sorry, we'll get back to that.
No, I have not. We had one phone call asking about, might have been you that asked when the meeting was? Is it, we had, we only had one phone call asking about when the meeting was, and that was...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Darren Jacobs. Just a couple of points, so Kenan, to your point, I understand NDOT's gonna have to look at this, and I'm sure, but she's kinda telling you that she pretty much assumes NDOT's gonna give it to them. So don't outsource your ability, which this body has an ability, to put restrictions or to make those decisions, don't just leave it up to NDOT. This body has authority as well. As far as, Jake, you talking about, you know, I don't feel like you got a good answer. When you vote tonight, it's done. Even if they come back for a subdivision, it doesn't matter, you've already approved what they're gonna do. Now, maybe you don't approve their subdivision process, but that's a separate matter. There is no site plan review that this body holds. At this point, after you vote for a CAU, and the commissioners give a rezone, then it all goes to Tom. And I'm not saying that Tom won't do a fantastic job, and that he'll work with Steve Rust, and that he'll work with Joe Copeland, and they'll go through all of those things, but, to your point, the decision for this body is tonight, and I don't want you to feel like there's gonna be some chance for a second bite at the apple.
I just hope anything else would come back before us, to the review.
And again, I have nothing against their business, I'm sure they run a good business. I'm like you, all I'd like to see is cleaned up, and I'd like to see a business go in there. But I don't know that this fits, again, that this fits to the idea that we wanted to elevate, we wanted to build that interchange up, not just for Spiceland, but for Henry County, for Newcastle, for everybody. At this point, does another gas station fulfill those needs? I understand it's mostly convenience, but I don't know that that fits regional, commercial type of development, and it's certainly not gonna be any type of a major employment generator. And then one final point, and then I'll be done, is notification, again, I'm sure that Tom and this lady, absolutely, I'm sure that they met the minimum requirements for notification. But if you look at the, if you look in Beacon, if you look at what is around it, you've got the interchange, which is the state of Indiana, you've got Milestone, which probably threw that notification in the trash, you've got the Hague Corporation, which has had their building for sale for years, probably threw that in the trash. They're purchasing the property next door, so they probably got their own, a notification for themselves. There probably was a handful of notifications out there, and the fact of the matter is, that I agree, this is a good place for business, highway business. I see nothing wrong with the rezone with a question on it. But this is a highly focal location that we can build up and make a good commercial area for the community, because we don't have a lot of houses. There's a handful down 500. My point is, I don't think that there's been enough conversation, again, about what is best for here. And even going back into the comprehensive plan, there was another point that I didn't pull out, that where it talks about, and this was an action step that's never been taken, is that we were supposed to do a separate sort of master plan for that interchange, to make sure that, decide ahead of time, is this the type of business that we want there? What type of businesses do we want around that interchange? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Do I bring her back up to address? I can't remember the process. Do I bring her back up to address any questions? Is there anything you would like to address? Okay, thank you.
How long do you expect to get any information from NDOT? And I, and I chuckle because of the number of times that I've waited on information from NDOT. How long do you expect? I mean, do you have any idea?
An example right now is we asked them five weeks ago for documents, and we just got them. Documents that they claim they had armed review in order to defend, and sent us an email to say, yes, they had them, or who was it adding to that trial, but they couldn't immediately turn that over to us, it took us five months to get those two out.
Who would necessarily be halting progress, particularly, if you're giving all the information that would show what NDOT did for that area's burn traffic?
Would we be halting progress? They're not gonna purchase the property until they know that they're gonna have a CAU. That's about the only thing I would say.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna have to leave for that other meeting. If I weren't president of it, I would stay here.
All right, thank you. So, to answer your question, I'm assuming, and you can answer yes or no, the purchase of this property hinges on a CAU.
Right, correct. We, we, there are things that we need to know before we can purchase the property. We need to, we need to vet out drainage, we need to do all of those things, we need to understand the access. Had we not discovered in the documents that we are guaranteed some type of access off of Highway 3, whether or not it's where it's actually in place, or whether or not they're gonna allow us to shift it, that's kind of what's in, you know, in flexibility, and And so that's why we're up against a timeframe right now. And to not be able to know that the CAU is approved, we would have to either cancel the contract or see if we could possibly, but we are already on extensions. And again, I apologize, I would have loved to have been here months ago, but again, we were trying to vet out everything else in order to make sure that we came here with as much information as possible.
Kind of appreciate, she says that they're under a time restraint, that we have to make a decision tonight. I would just like, for the record, just to say that I was notified 60 days ago or 30 days ago, and then they canceled the meeting.
Well, the meeting, the meeting got canceled because the newspaper did not get the legal ad in correctly.
Okay.
It was none, it was none of their fault, it was actually the Courier-Times fault.
I guess I was told that they, that they weren't prepared.
No.
So that-
No.
Was just one thing.
Yeah, the Courier-Times did not get the legal notification in correctly. Yeah. Yeah, the newspaper was not prepared. Okay. Anything else? Okay, I guess we're ready for the three questions. Sean? Wait, I do have one more thing. Sorry. What I would like to do is, because we are getting so many complaints about that property and what it looks like, if the CAU is approved and you purchase this property, how quickly that you will be in there cleaning up this property, because we are getting so many complaints about how this property looks. I mean, I know it may not be in your plan in the next 90 days to start building, but could there be something as soon as it's purchased that you would begin cleanup of those properties?
Yes, this is nothing new for us, because, you know, I can't speak to the terms of the contract. There'll be certain obligations that the current property owners have to take care of and do, but once it's ours, it's ours, and we take that very seriously. Not only do we take our reputation very seriously when it comes to how we operate a store, but that we do what we say we're going to do. So understanding that is an issue, and knowing that we own the property, then yes, we will be addressing those issues. But again, I don't know, I would assume there was going to be some responsibility on the current property owners.
Could we require, like, for, within 90 days of purchase?
Yeah, like, whatever contract is set up.
Okay. That's the, okay. Right, correct. Then, okay, that's what, that was just my question. Okay. All right, so I guess we're-
Can I ask, is there currently complaints on file levied against the property?
We have constant complaints on that property.
What it looks like, yeah. KAL just went in there and knocked down fences and started cleaning, and then just abandoned the property. We've been attempting to-
KAL started the process, and they hauled a lot of stuff out. They cleared up a lot. But then when they abandoned their project, they just pretty much gave up everything, and the wind blew down the remaining fences, or most of them around there. I think only the mess on the inside was keeping the wind from blowing through, blowing the fences down.
But as of right now, there's no complaints on file, just calls?
Well, they're constantly on file.
Okay.
KAL's aware, KAL's chosen to pretty much ignore us.
Okay.
Another question.
What, do you have an expected date that you would like to break ground and actually start a project there? Is that, is it, is this a purchase in anticipation of building two years from now or two months from now?
I would love to say that it would probably, I would hope to say that it would be within, you know, four to six months, if it was just solely going through the permitting process with Henry County. But as we have mentioned their name numerous times tonight, we would need an NDOT permit.
Right, right.
So it would-
But once you had everything, if everything-
Once we had an NDOT permit, we'd probably be ready to go. Because we'll do everything concurrently. We'll get it platted, we'll get, we'll go on and submit for permitting, for site development review, and all that.
Most corporations have in mind a timeframe for when they're going to build certain things, and I didn't know if that was a third quarter of this year project, or a first quarter of next year project. And often, people buy properties well in advance when they're actually going to start a real project.
Yeah, I would say if it, if we are granted the right to proceed with the site plan we have in place, I would say we'd probably be breaking ground in six months. If we're not, and NDOT because, is going to become the, kind of the time, the one that's really going to control that schedule.
The only benefit that I could see that we really come out of this, if you'd done it, done it right away, was clean that area up. But if it's not going to be cleaned up, it's going to be into the summer or into winter, and it's still like it is right now, we've wasted our time here.
Well, it's contingent of them, they haven't purchased it yet, so it's contingent upon them purchasing the property. Them cleaning it up is contingent, yeah. They can't go in and-
If this is the case, we can also talk to the current property owners and see what's going on, and basically anticipate whether or not they're going to leave the mess for us, or if they're going to clean it up. The bottom line is, if we cancel the contract, we've got a whole lot longer time that it's going to maintain status quo, because I don't, but we do anticipate having to waive on this and then possibly close on the property within 45 to 60 days. I would say, if this all passes, we will close in about 60 days.
Okay. All right, Sean?
Okay, so this is the three questions. First question is, the proposed commission approved use is to be located in a zoning district wherein such use may be permitted, and I knew we did a review on the last case. So with that said, Dale Cole? The proposed commission approved use is to be located in a zoning district wherein such use may be permitted. David Fisher? Lori Fritsch? Jake Martin?
Yes.
Second question. The requirements set forth in the zoning district in this section, which has been approved, will be met. Dale Cole?
Yes.
David Fisher? Lori Fritsch? Jake Martin? Terry Matten?
Yes.
Third, the final question. The proposed uses are consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of these regulations, will not substantially and permanently injure the appropriate use of the neighboring property, and will serve the public's convenience and welfare. Dale Cole?
Yes.
Bobby Plummer?
Yes.
Martha Gratner?
Yes.
David Fisher? Lori Fritsch? Jake Martin?
Yes.
Tom, you want to move on to the next? I think we go- And we have no old business yet? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Thank you, everyone.